Welcome everyone to our October 5th, 2020 city council meeting. We'll start with these caucus of agenda items at which point time gives all the council members and department heads an opportunity to augment the information, supplement the information, give everyone a better idea as to what each line item is and what everyone's position might be on those items, their concerns and positives and the negatives. Before we begin, I would ask all to stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first several items are administrative. First item I want to take up is the communication from council members, council member Second Ward, Jeff Semansky, and prepared a resolution relative to the Lehigh soccer stadium. Councilman Semansky, is there anything you want to say on that item?
Well, my resolution says it all, but says many people only have the Cliff Notes version. I'll make it short. The First Ward councilman has for many months say that he believes that the soccer stadium in the First Ward should be the Lackawanna Soccer Stadium. And quite frankly, I don't even know if this stadium ever had an official name. We've had names before for other facilities such as our football stadium, our baseball stadiums, our softball stadiums, Little League fields, et cetera. So I decided, why don't we sort of put it all together into one? And so I took a playbook from when I was stationed out in San Diego with the United States Navy and which the corporation called Qualcomm bought the naming rights to the field in which, or to the stadium in which the Padres and the Chargers played their sports. But the residents weren't very happy about that because for whoever Jack Murphy was, they really enjoyed it being called Jack Murphy Stadium. However, they didn't have the naming rights. Qualcomm bought the rights and the residents were unhappy. So they made a compromise and they said, fine, it'll be Qualcomm Stadium on Jack Murphy Field. And everyone said, okay, good compromise, sounds good. And so that's where I kind of got this idea from, where we can name it what it is, Lackawanna Soccer Stadium. I wanted to acknowledge the greatest soccer coach the city's ever had, a soccer coach that is synonymous with the sport of soccer in Lackawanna. If you didn't know him as a councilman, which I probably served with for nine years in government, then you knew him as a soccer coach. And so I wanted to say, fine, it's Lackawanna Soccer Stadium on honorable coach Abdul Salam No Man Field, recognizing his accomplishments over the many decades he had coaching our youth. And then also mentioning that it is the home of the Lackawanna Yemen Soccer Club, established in 1975, which also is the year I was established. It's had zero intention of removing the other sign that's already in place, never did remove it in my life, don't plan on it, always thought it had its little history to it as well. So I figured we can follow what Councilman Ingram wanted, name the soccer stadium, Lackawanna Soccer Stadium, name the field after a coach that everyone is synonymous with the sport, and acknowledge who plays there every summer and as the Lackawanna Yemen Soccer Club. So I said, why don't we make everybody happy and put it together? And then as of Saturday, apparently I made everyone unhappy by doing this. So that's the background. I just tried to have the roads to good intentions. Unfortunately, it's not paid well with many people, so I submitted as a resolution. It could be voted up, it could be voted down, but that was the intention and it could be a win-win for everybody. Unfortunately, I think it'll be now a lose-lose.
Councilman Semansky, first of all, I think we all like to recognize your efforts in doing through balls equals we haven't been able to do for so many years otherwise. So I don't think your efforts have gone and fallen on deaf ears, but I'm just wondering if you might consider a different approach with this, for instance, either tabling it or receiving and filing it and maybe referring it to a committee for studying input from different members of the community? Would you consider something like that?
How about we do both? How about we table it and then we can have a committee work on it and if we decide to make alterations, we can amend my resolution and adjust accordingly.
I commend you for that and I thank you for it. Any other members of the council have any comments on that? Thank you, councilors.
Yes.
All right, communication from department heads, division heads, city clerk, Mr. Davis Quiley. Do you want to comment on?
All right, yeah, item number four, requesting attached resolution. The state of New York has adopted a new records retention schedule. Currently, the city of Lackawanna utilizes what we call the MU1. In other school districts and other municipalities, villages, towns use a records retention schedule that's separate. There's several different records retention schedules and what the state of New York has done is they've condensed them into all into one. So what's happened is some of the numbers in that have changed, the timetables and the recommended areas of retention really haven't, but they put it in an all-encompassing records retention schedule called the LGS1. And as per the state of New York, each municipality and school district and whoever else is governed by the records retention must adopt via resolution the new LGS1. So in a nutshell, I've asked that the council adopt a resolution, whereas we now follow the LGS1.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Any comments by the council on this item? Moving to item number five, Director Helfman requesting city council approve attached communications. There are several. Director Stanton, would you want to enlighten us on this?
Sure. I think last time we were here, we actually had a public hearing before we started on the C-Pace financing law, which is a tool for financing both new development and rehabilitation of old projects for percentage of the costs related to the energy component, protein energy, renovations for buildings or new buildings with protein energy. It brings another source of funding to developers or building owners. And it would use that for funding to go after our, it's secured by our public improvement need facility and is financed by, in part, to finance by NACERTA, allocated through a corporation, not the profit corporation, called the Energy Improvement Corporation. That's before you are seen, adoptable of the law, so it can be made available for people to finance. Its structures were new structures in the city of Lackawanna by building three new facilities that are converting to community buildings. It's a three-step process because it's enacted by governmental body. There's a proposed negative declaration that needs to be adopted. First, a negative declaration proposed because it has no potential adverse impact on the environment for any new projects who still have to go through their own state environment upon review and so will not the projects themselves in any adverse impacts. The second aspect is the adoption of the local law, which is now going through the local law process to do the final step of adopting it. And the third step in the process would be authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Energy Improvement Corporation so that the program could be able to.
Thank you, Director Stanton. And if I recall correctly, at the public hearing, you indicated through your own research that this program has existed for some time in New York State and it has been very successful. Has that happened?
Yeah, I think it's been around for a couple of years. You know, it's about $1.5 million in investments in new buildings or renovating old buildings. I think the numbers for last year was about $677 million in investment in buildings and finance. I've also had two people interested in local building projects who expressed interest in it and are requesting to adopt major projects in the area.
Thank you, Director Stanton. Any comments or questions from the council? Moving on to item number six, city attorney requests city council approve attached contract between the city of Lackawanna and the new chief of police, Mark Packard. I think we've all had a chance to review that contract. There was an amended sheet that came out with the base salary indicating it's $102,000. Any of the council members wish to address that or our city attorney, Mr. Judah, anything you want to say on it?
No, unless anyone has any questions.
Anyone have any questions on this item? All right. As many of you might recall, there was a table item that I had asked be placed on today's agenda regarding the increase in salary for the city attorney. To that end, I would like to comment that having been a member of the law department many, many, many years ago, I can recall when we had four attorneys up there and the workload was parceled out accordingly and we didn't run into the massive amounts of opinion and workload that is currently experienced with the law department today. Primarily, the bulk of all that work, it falls on Mr. Judah and in my opinion, he's woefully underpaid. And in addition to that, serious consideration should be given to bolstering the and supplementing the staff in the law department. We consider that every item that comes through the city in one shape or another touches the law department for an opinion, for a resolution, for an ordinance. It's all-inclusive and there's nothing that, no business that comes before the city that doesn't run through the law department first. And to Mr. Judah's credit, he has always been there for all of us, answered all of our questions, and he's gone above and beyond what's been required or asked of him on each and every occasion, and he should have our thanks. Any of the council members wish to comment on that item?
I believe it's incredibly well worth it. You are correct. The work has been staying in-house, saving us a bunch for as often as we can, unless it calls for a specialty purpose. Mr. Judah has served this city for many decades, in and out, in many capacities, not just in the city, but also school. He's well versed in many governments and I would gladly add to him a quote, please.
Thank you, Councilman Semansky. Anyone else? All right. To that end, you are formally called to order the agenda of the business of the city council of the city of Lackawanna. Today's date, October 5th, 2020. Do we have the list of comments? Officer Joyce is kind enough to. City Clerk, would you call the roll first?
Sheriff, Mr. Council President, Roll Call, Council, Ingram?
Here.
Semansky?
Here.
Moretti?
Here.
Surley?
Here.
Marano?
Here.
Department heads law?
Here.
Development?
Here.
Public works?
Here.
Public safety?
Here.
Controller?
Here.
Recreation?
Here.
Gairs and citizens.
Our first request is from Mohammed Al-Bana. Mr. Al-Bana, would you approach the mic and call me here?
Thank you. My name is Mohammed Al-Bana, 167 Lehigh. And I'd like to speak on item number three. I understand it's going to be.
Table.
But I just like to let everybody know there was no reason for change of name. The name of the soccer field has been there for 40 years and I really do not understand the push by one councilman or the other to change the name. Furthermore, a few weeks ago.
May I interrupt you, Mr. Al-Bana? What is the official, what is the name you're referring to as?
It's right on the sign.
What does the sign say?
It's been there for 40 years.
Well, I'm not facing the sign right now. What does it say?
It said the Yemen Soccer Club, Soccet Soccer Field.
Okay.
So it's been there for 40 years. Nobody ever had a problem with it. Why is there problems now? It was the world, people were going to change the name. I thought that when they, a few weeks ago, knocked the name, the sign down, they went to another name and then we talked to the mayor and said that she was going to allow the community to have some input into the name, naming of the field. What's more important is for that field to be upgraded. The city has committed a fund alongside the fund that we got from the state of New York, but they never told them a limit. To name the stadium the way it looks now, it's an insult to stadium. And so I think we appreciate the gesture, but I think it's display. I think if we want to really have a good discussion and a positive discussion about changing the name of the soccer field, which is very important to the community that lives around that area and that uses the field on a yearly basis. They have, you know, they carry the Lackawanna Yemen Soccer Team everywhere in western New York. They go to Michigan and say, the Lackawanna Yemen Soccer Team, etc., etc. So I'm not going to, you know, guess as to what was the reason for this push, but I talked to Mr. No Man and we appreciate the gesture, but he's not interested in having his name also on the field right now as the condition of the field stands right now. So I think it's a good thing that you allow to revert to committee, allow the community members to, you know, get some input into it. And then most importantly, us upgrade the field with the money that was committed when we had that $300,000 from the state of New York.
Mr. Al-Bana, we'll let Mr. DeSantis.
Could I ask you a question? You're saying that we, the field needs upgrading. We've put $360,000 into that field. What, how could you say that that field has been bad condition?
I'm saying that you didn't fulfill the whole obligation that was committed to your stadium.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Could you explain where we didn't?
Yeah, there is some problem at the north side, the south side of the field with the water.
That water, the agreement was Yemen Soccer Club was supposed to take that field over just like the Boys Association and Little Loop, and we were to add drainage once you, once the Yemen Soccer Club signed the agreement. That was our agreement. I was in the meeting, Mr. Semansky was in the meeting, Mr. No Man was in the meeting, and that's what we came and we left with. There were some other people, I can't remember exactly who else was in there.
So you're saying that you had an agreement with some people that the Yemen Soccer Club was going to take over the field?
A verbal agreement, yes.
Verbal agreement. Was there an agreement to, you know, finish the field?
The field was finished.
The contractor did finish the field.
I'm sorry, but you're wrong. The contractor did finish, the contract was met, the contractor did everything. The drainage that you're talking about was not in the scope of work that was performed on that field. There was something on the side that we were willing to take care of once we came into an agreement on leasing that field.
That's not my understanding. My understanding is that the city, you know, Lackawanna, $50,000 to finish that side of the field.
No.
Let me propose this. This field has been the subject of discussion and controversy and sometimes ill will for a number of years. Perhaps the greater good to be gotten out of this by putting it in a committee and inviting people to comment and work on this is to start the dialogue, to allow the interested parties to have a voice, to discuss what the problems are, and to come to some understanding so that we can move on from where we are now today as a community into something that doesn't include the controversy over the Lehigh soccer field.
Well, we appreciate that. As long as, as long as you involve the community, as long as you involve the individual that uses that field. Because the last two decisions were not, you know, communicated to the community. I might have even knocked the sign down without the opponent knowing.
Can I inject?
And felt insult, you know, really insulted that, you know, somebody come in and just take it right off and throw it on the floor. Why?
And granted, some mistakes were made, but we're trying to by creating the dialogue.
That's fine. I have no problem with that. Only establish a committee and involve the input by the community. I'm sure we could come up to, come to a reasonable.
And that's our hope.
Solution.
John, very brief.
Yes, and it's good that we're going to have a meeting for the community, but it needs the whole community. Because I've, I've been, as soon as I got to council, first thing I talked about the field. Field. In 2010, this was brought up at city council about the field. It was brought up before I got here, you know, that if you're going to have a meeting about, that is the city of Lackawanna property, so that's the whole community. It's not one cer, that is not one certain part whatever. The whole community needs to have input. And some of the community members still that they weren't, they didn't have input, they couldn't even go here. Now, we can, our group, they know that stuff, but by having that, having a community meeting, a community task, or getting the whole community involved, for some, because some people felt left out. I was told a number change, some people felt they couldn't use it. Now, I'm not saying if they're telling truth, I'm not saying they're telling a lie, but that's the whole community. It's not just one community in the First Ward.
Well, John, I understand that you want to involve the whole community. I appreciate, I really do, but I think that you information that, you know, it said somebody can't use it, it's a soccer field. If you want to use it, you are more than welcome. There's a field back there. Everybody that comes there, use it. There's nobody.
Mr. Al-Bana?
Yes.
All right, Lieutenant.
No, no, I'm just saying, when you, if you're going to speak.
Wait, wait, hold on.
By the whole community.
Let me, let me.
I have some questions for you, but you know.
Let me say this.
Hold, wait, 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 wait. This is not a subject for debate tonight. The whole idea of putting this into a committee is to have the discussion at another time, at another location, or might be here, but when we have time to address all the concerns and air out this.
Sure. And the first, first of all, councilmen is, is, is you want to talk to the community much?
We'll put that together. We'll solve this issue. I told you we were going to move on.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Al-Bana. Amira Mufalahi?
My name is Amira Mufalahi and I am the mayor of New York City. And I'm here also to address agenda number three. I do respect Mr. No Man immensely and he has done so much for our first, for our youth, from the first generation until today. Average youth have been, had a diversion from the streets and healthy avenue in sports. So that is not why we are here today. The reason why I'm here today, I believe you all remember that I addressed the council early September in regards to voter suppression that was conducted by Mr. Semansky. Just to give you as an update.
These are agenda items only, ma'am? Thank you. Agenda items only?
This is regarding the agenda director.
What's agenda item?
This is part of the agenda director. My. It is not, please.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
Well, if you're not going to be.
Mr. Semansky put a motion into the agenda.
Okay, wait, wait. The understanding is that the public is welcome to comment on agenda items. You had an opportunity to address it, and you did the last time very well. If you want to submit something for the next meeting to address the council.
If we are doing the agenda number three.
This, this is obviously not, because you talked about voter suppression. Agenda item number three is the council, is Councilman Semansky's resolution.
Right.
So unless you want to address the Lehigh soccer field, I'm not going to entertain you.
They do dovetail, your honor, and I'm getting there. He would allow me.
We're not taking any dovetails. Either hit the, hit the mark directly or we're going to move on.
Absolutely. So Mr. Semansky put the resolution for agenda number three, correct? He's the Second Ward council member. He represents the Second Ward council. There is no reason for him to address the soccer field.
It's a city asset.
He's not a panel.
It's a city asset, the city council patrols all city property.
And we also have a representative from the First Ward that is fully capable of doing such. So we ask that Mr. Semansky does not dip his hand in the affair that involves the First Ward and the Arab American community that he is also suppressing their votes, your honor.
Okay, well, okay, that's, let me see. Okay, Amira. Shouldn't we be a community that welcomes all ideas and thoughts?
Absolutely.
Including Councilman Semansky's? This is for the city's benefit and this was his legitimate attempt to address an issue that's been festering for a long time. So I'm not going to accept those kinds of attacks. It's not appropriate. It's not an agenda item. You keep going back to the voter suppression. You had your day in court the last time, so we're going to move on. Thank you.
That's amazing.
Mr. City Clerk?
All right, moving on. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, September 28th, 2020.
Move to adopt, minutes is written.
All right, on seconds. Motion by Semansky, second by Marano, to adopt minutes is written. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Period 5-0. Departmental reports, one and two. Moves to receive and file departmental reports, one and two, inclusive.
All right, a second.
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports, one and two. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Period 5-0. Communications from council members, item number three. Councilmember Semansky requests that the council approve the attached resolution regarding the Lehigh Avenue soccer complex.
Motion to table for further study.
Second. We're going to, motion inclusive will be the receiving file of your communication as part of that, so we're going to have a motion by Semansky, second by Marano to receive and file, table the resolution pending further study. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Period 5-0. Communication from department, division heads, number four. City Attorney requests city council approve the attached resolution, whereas the city of Lackawanna adopts the records retention schedule known as the LGS1, mandated by New York State. Marano moves to receive and file Act on Resolution.
Second.
Motion by Marano, second by Semansky, receive and file Act on Resolution. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Period 5-0. The resolution, whereas the city of Lackawanna hereby adopts the retention and disposition schedule for New York local government records, known as the LGS1, issued pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law.
Marano moves to adopt resolution is written. Second. Moretti.
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti, to adopt a resolution is written. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Period 5-0. Number five. Director of Development requests the city council review and approve the following attached communications, a draft negative declaration or a seeker, and adopt the resolution, which both adopts Local Law 3-2020 and authorizes the mayor to execute the memorandum of agreement with the Energy Improvement Corporation to implement the use of C-Pace financing, agreement with the Energy, C-Pace financing. Full version of this seeker, Local Law and the associated municipal agreement is quite involved in a full.
Pursuing. Motion to receive and file Act on Negdech and Act on Resolution and Local Law.
All right, on seconds. Motion by Semansky, second by Marano, to receive and file Act, Act Negative Declaration of Seeker and Act on Resolution and Local Law. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Period 5-0. Part of that also, the Local Law 3-2020, to be known as the Energize New York Old C-Pace Financing Program.
Marano moves to adopt Local Law is written. Second.
Motion by Marano, second by Semansky, to adopt Local Law is written. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
And as per Mr. Stanton's conversation earlier, the agreement, the intermunicipal agreement is incorporated within the resolution and Local Law, so that's covered. Number six, city attorney requests the city council approve the attached contract between the city of Lackawanna and the chief of police, full contract on file, City Clerk, Tom.
Marano moves to approve request. All right, second.
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.